I'd like to call the August 11th, 2011, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson.
Here.
Mr. Pons.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Mr. Friling.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Before we get to our first order of business, I hope everyone noticed as they came in, the new fire truck that's parked outside. Chief, would you like to come tell us a little bit about your new piece of equipment? It's -- I know this is a surprise for you, but I think you probably are proud enough to be able to tell us something about it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the City Council. Yes, we are very proud of it, and we appreciate all the support in purchasing the new apparatus. As we talked about six months ago or so, that we were replacing a 1988 piece of apparatus, which we were able to sell to a volunteer organization who was in much need of a new to them, but they had an engine that was having some problems. So, we were able to move that one out. And fortunately, we -- our committee did an outstanding job. We had a committee with two people off of each shift, with a battalion chief that was overseeing the committee, and they were tasked with pretty much building this truck from the ground up, obviously with some input from Pierce Manufacturing, who was our manufacturer of this engine. It has all the state-of-the-art equipment. I hope everybody had the opportunity to look at it. We tried to show some of the new features of it, all the new safety features, even for EMS equipment. We have a climate-controlled cabinet where we're able to keep drugs inside of the apparatus in the cab. We hope next week to have completed the training by the end of next week. Pierce Manufacturing's sending a rep down to train all three shifts on the piece of apparatus, and then we hope to have it in service by the end of next week. Along with that, Pierce also had a rep down this week in Jame City County. We were able to send one of our mechanics to a two-day training over there to get them up to speed on all the changes in technology with this new apparatus, so if we do have difficulties down the road, they'll have more knowledge about all the changes. If anybody has any specific questions, or I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Any questions? Chief, thanks, and again, this is -- I know you guys are proud of this, and we're proud that we have the best fire department in the world, and that you guys have the best equipment to keep our community safe. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all's support.
Okay. And if you haven't had a chance to see, is it going to still be out there?
No, sir. We were taken it back after -- once everybody got into the meeting, but anybody's more than welcome to walk over to the station, and we'll give them the tour.
So, I hope if anybody's watching and would like to see it, that they'll take time to come by the station and let you guys show it off.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Our first order of business today is council minutes from the meetings of July 11th and July 14th. Ms. Scott, I think there was a slight change to the minutes after they were distributed. Would you like to describe?
Yes, there were. On page eight and nine of the July 14th minutes, under the closed session section, the times that that session was called, and the people who made the motions, and the seconds.
So, those are the only changes?
Were amended, yes.
Okay, great. Are there any addition -- other additions or corrections to the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of the minutes as amended by Ms. Scott.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Next order of business is matters of special privilege. We have none today, is that correct? And the next order of business is background presentations, discussions, and this is about the youth achievement program. We have Human Services Director Pete Wallantish with us. Pete, would you like to?
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. It's once again a great privilege for me to be with the city and with our Human Services Department, and primarily because you've entrusted the lives of our citizens, both young and old, to our care and our work in different phases of life and different problems that life presents. And today, we have for you once again our young people, who are our future here in the city. I hope we may see a few of them working for the city, and maybe even be on City Council someday as well. I'm very proud of them. We have two youth who will speak today, and then I will introduce the staff at the end of the presentation.
Mayor Holman, and members of City Council. Hi, my name is Jamil Ball. I live at 520 Henderson Street. I have attended this summer Youth Achievement Program this year. It's been a great summer, and I've learned plenty of things that will help me later in life. Things such as build a relationship between your family members, pick your goals, prioritize them, and keep a positive attitude and motivation to achieve those goals. Also, to pay attention to what adults tell you, and when they correct you, is to make you a better person, so you can have a positive future. The counselors taught us all those things, but what will stay with me and others are the three Rs. Respect, role modeling, and responsibility. Respect means respect your elders and also your peers, so you treat them the way you want to be treated. Role modeling: be a leader and not a follower. Do the right things that lead others to do the same. Responsibility: first be responsible for you and only you, then you can be responsible for others. I've had many experiences in our activities, discussions, and lessons. I want to thank the City Council for making this program possible. We, the youth of the city, really appreciate what you've done for us. Thank you also to the City of Williamsburg for making me a better person. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are very good words, and thank you for participating in the program as well.
Hi, my name is Destiny Kirk. I live at 206 New Hope Road. I have learned these past six weeks to be a much better person. One way is by not being influenced by my peers. For example, when someone tells me to do the wrong thing instead of the right. One of my favorite experiences of the summer was when we had mock job interviews for a job of the future. This activity helped me learn how to present myself in a job interview. We also enjoyed listening to our elders on Human Service Advisory Board. They told us what life was like when they were young, and why they chose their careers. Also, at the ropes course at William &amp; Mary, we learned to trust our team members as well as to overcome our own fears. It was just one of many life challenges that we will need to face in the years ahead. I thank the City of Williamsburg for giving us these opportunities and experiences.
Terrific job. Thank you, and thank you for participating.
Mayor and Council, we had an extraordinary staff this summer. This is the A-Team, for sure, and they made this summer extraordinary for our youth. I would like to introduce the staff, and I would ask them to stand as I mention each person's name. First of all, Walesha Darsee. David Goodwin.
Stay standing.
Emilio Pesante. And Emilio is the program coordinator. And last but not least, and I saved him for last, is Sean Preston. Sean had a little injury with his foot, not in our program, though, so -- but about Sean, he's one of our youth graduates. It tells you a little bit of how long I've been with the city. I won't mention that, but he was in the youth program, I think, more than one summer. I'm very pleased to tell you that he graduated from Virginia State University in history, bachelor's in history. He's from Highland Park. He was an intern in our program last summer, and now that he got his bachelor's degree, we hired him on staff this year, and I believe he put in an application to our local -- to our Williamsburg Jame City school system. So, hopefully, they'll notice him, too, and pick him up on staff. But I'm very pleased to introduce you to our staff. And before I sit down, I would like to invite council, city staff, and all of our citizens to attend the closing ceremony of the summer program. We have quite a program for you. It's under an hour. It's at 12:00 noon, across the street in the City Community Building, and please, if any of you are able to come, we would love to have you there. Thank you, Mayor.
Pete, before you sit down, could -- what year -- how many years has this program been operating?
We started this in 1994, after council commissioned the youth commission, and the first program was a partnership with the college, and that partnership has continued in many different ways over the years. It was with Multicultural Affairs, and it was called the Higher Aspirations Wisdom and Knowledge Program, HAWK for short, and that was our first group. And I'm very pleased to tell you, as you can see, we're still doing it today.
Well, Pete, thank you for all you do, and thank you for this -- running this program, and for all the people that work with you, because this has really been -- it is an important program for the city and for city youth, and we really appreciate it. Does anyone else on council have anything they'd like to?
Just share a thought or two. And first of all, it's very kind of the participants to thank us, although I don't know how much credit we can really take for this, other than providing the framework that allows Mr. Wallantish and the councilors to do the work that you enjoy. The one thing, if I could add, is thank you for participating in the program. Not every young person in the city's going to want to commit themselves to this type of effort during the summer, when it's a time when they might think more about relaxing or going outside and playing with friends and doing any number of other things, but you're showing a commitment to yourselves and to this community simply by your participation. And I don't want to sound like a counselor, although I'm sure they're wonderful people, but two things I'd just like to share. You will get out -- get as much out of this program as you put into it, and as you apply in your time after the program. And hopefully, for those of you who are younger, you'll keep coming back and learn more and more each year. So, thanks to the councilors, because I know from each year, the feedback we get from the participants is extremely positive.
Scott?
Thank you. Good luck this -- once school starts.
No. Again, this is always one of the special moments for me. This is my second time having you all come and speak to us and tell us about what you got out of the program this year. And for me, it gives me a great sense of pride that we have a Human Service Department and the staff and the wherewithal to put together a program like this, where it's obvious that the students and the youth really get a lot out of it and enjoy it, and so, keep it up. And as Vice Mayor Friling says, you know, this is just the beginning. You've got a whole life ahead of you, and if you take these things that you learned today, you know, the world is your oysters. Keep up the good work.
I'd just like to echo all that, and thank you all for all the hard work you've put in. And I think I'd like to say to almost everybody that we are really privileged to live in a city that continues to support this kind of activity in an era when everybody's talking about cutbacks. We are lucky to be able to support this kind of program for our youth and for the city. So, thank you all.
And I'll just conclude by particularly thanking Pete and thanking the staff for all you do. And again, this is -- we're getting close to 20 years on this program, and it's had a real impact on this community, a real impact on the young people in this community, and it's something I hope we can continue to do into the future. And I'll echo my other members of council in thanking you as the youth of this community for investing in the community, because it's important to you and it's important to us. So, thank you. And again, I'll remind everyone that the concluding graduation is tomorrow at noon at the Community Building. Is that right? Great. Thank you, and thank you all again. Our next order of business is public hearings. Public hearings regarding amendment to the zoning regulations pertaining to rental bedrooms to roomers in underoccupied, single-family detached dwellings. I think as a result of the hearings that the Planning Commission held, inadvertently, they failed to look at all the options that were put forward. So, I think I would take a motion for council to defer act hearing until Planning Commission has time to have a public hearing dealing with all the options. Summer?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Mayor -- Mr. Friling.
I answered anything.
And Mr. Foster, I'm sorry.
I'll say aye, too.
Aye, aye, aye. Before we continue, I think there's one point of confusion, and Chris, if you could help us with this. What's the relationship between the three-person rule? And right now, we have a rumor regulation that allows, by BZA exception, to have three or four persons. Could you explain a little bit about what's the relationship between those two?
Sure. The three-person limitation on occupancies, the general zoning in residential districts in the city of Williamsburg. The rumor provisions are by special exception, and a special exception is just that. It is an exception to the general zoning. And so, under certain conditions, when City Council provides for it in zoning ordinance and the BZA approves it, under a special exception, additional individuals can live in a dwelling. But again, they have to meet certain conditions, and that has to be approved by the BZA.
So, if BZA approves this, it trumps the three-person rule?
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
And it's not about that. It's more about process. I don't know if anybody showed up today to speak to this issue, but if they did, is it possible to allow them to at least have the opportunity to share their comments?
I'd just say, yes. You could either open and continue a public hearing, or if you simply wanted to open the floor to any comments not formally part of the public hearing, you could do either. It's up to you.
Since we've deferred the public hearing, we -- this won't be part -- a formal part of the public hearing, but if anyone here who wishes to speak to this wishes to do so, if council agrees, we can open the floor to it. Do I have agreement from council?
Yes.
Okay. So, if anyone's here to speak to this, please feel free to do so.
Thank you, Mayor. Terrence Wheel, Harriet Tubman Drive. I wanted to speak to the part that we're looking at for two persons and allowing two roomers in a home, in a dwelling. And we go from one by right, and the way it's written now, as I understand it, is if you can have two, perhaps by administrative approval, but you have to have four parking spaces for two. Two for the occupants and two for the roomers. So, we go from zero parking spaces required to four for two, potentially two roomers. What I'm looking for and hoping for is especially close in to the college, where students without vehicles really need this help, and if they don't have a vehicle, we're cutting back on the availability quite a bit by requiring the four automobiles. Many of the homes don't have the footage in front of them, or the space on the lot to allow the four. So, if there's a way, and I think my own idea is through the parking sticker regulations. Most of the neighborhoods have parking sticker requirements close in to the college. And I'm trying to make it as easy as possible to work this, in effect, so that it's enforceable and people don't worry about it. So, if two people come, or more than so many come with a lease and they want a parking sticker, it would be a way to check, well, are you approved for having two in the home? And if you want a car, then you need to be approved for four parking spaces. And if they don't have a car, then they can still be allowed to live there and not have to worry about parking spaces. So, just a way to help the homeowners with some income, and the students who can walk or ride their bike to the college. Farther out, of course, they need a car, so it's not a problem, but perhaps something to think about.
Great. Thank you. Christine, when is the public hearing for the Planning Commission?
I believe it's next week.
September 17.
The 17th. Terrence, you may want to, if possible, to make that meeting, to make it clear, because they're going to consider this, and they will make then recommendations to City Council, and City Council will then, in September, have a hearing on this. But thank you for your ideas. Those are quite useful. Any other questions or comments? So, the hearing is postponed until the September meeting. Okay. Next order of business is reports. The first of those is the monthly financial statements. Is there anything, Jack, anything you want to point out?
No, sir. Just one month into the fiscal year, and nothing to highlight at this point.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next are the monthly departmental operating reports. Anything in particular?
Just two things I thought I would point out. One, you'll notice under the finance section, the note at the top discusses the assessment to sales ratio, and for the last month, it was at 97.8 percent. Anything below 100 percent is, in a sense, in positive territory. That's meaning that sales are keeping up with assessment, and that, of course, is what we're looking for in terms of the long-term health of the appropriateness of our assessments, and therefore knowing that they'll support budgets in the future. The other thing to mention on assessments is that there have been 29 appeals this year. There were 21 last year. So, a bit larger number of folks coming out, questioning their assessments. Those will go first to the assessor, and I think they've been through that process. Next step is to the Board of Equalization, and their job, of course, is to look at all aspects and make a determination. The other thing I'd point out in public works is that our water tank is now over 60 percent constructed off of Route 60 in the Riverside slash Williamsburg, a quarter path of Williamsburg area, and that -- we expect that will be fully completed, integrated into the city's water system, and ready to go the first of next year.
Anybody have any questions on either the financial reports or the operating reports?
I have just a couple.
Yep.
One, I just got back in town, as y'all know, and I rode down Richmond Road and saw the sidewalk. It looks wonderful in front of Sorority Court. It really looks very nice. So, that's nice. The other thing in the report, I noticed the health insurance numbers are way down, which is very nice.
Right. Essentially, what the numbers show this year is that what we had projected in terms for health insurance payments this year came in almost exactly what was actually spent for health claims.
Right.
That's a good thing, because the last couple of years--
Oh, yeah.
-- we've spent more than projected, and that's mean we've had to pull out of reserves to cover that.
Right.
So, that's a good sign.
Yeah. And the other was the number of new businesses that were listed. That was also very nice. So, yeah, it's all very positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next order of business is city attorney reports, and this is bank-qualified tax-exempt financing for Tribe Square, proposed Resolution 11-09.
Each year, the city has the option of issuing up to $10 million in bank-qualified tax-exempt bonds to nonprofit organizations for qualifying projects. The William &amp; Mary Real Estate Foundation requested an issuance of five million, up to $5 million worth of bonds for their project at Tribe Square. The bonds would only be for the purpose of funding the housing element of that project, which is the tax-exempt portion of that. The Economic Development Authority had a public hearing last month and approved the issuance of the bonds. City Council also has to approve the issuance of those bonds, and that is by resolution, which is in City Council's agenda. Nancy Buchanan, the executive director of the William &amp; Mary Real Estate Foundation, is here to answer any questions that council may have regarding the project, and Shelton Witt, the economic development director for the city, is also here to answer any questions that council may have. And additionally, I'll attempt to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. And Nancy, thank you for being here. Anyone have any questions?
Yes, sir.
I'll take them up.
Mr. Mayor, I move that finding the Tribe Square project appropriate for tax-exempt financing through the city of Williamsburg. The City Council approved proposed Resolution 11-09.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Thank you. This is a terrific project, Nancy. We really appreciate the Real Estate Foundation and the college working with the city on this. I think it's sort of the ideal partnership, and it's a terrific project, and I think everyone needs to be very proud of what's happening there. And it's good for the city, it's good for the college, and good for the Real Estate Foundation. So, thank you very much.
Can I just add one thing? Yeah, I know there's still work to be done, but I think it's a really quality addition to the streetscape on Richmond Road, along with the sidewalks, as Ms. Newtonson pointed out, which are extraordinary. And we really appreciate the efforts of all people involved in order to pull this project together, even at times when it looked like there was a long way to go before the deadline.
Great. And again, city staff has done a terrific job, so thank all of the staff. And Michelle, I hope you'll convey our thanks to the EDA for their good work on this as well. Thank you. Anybody else? If not, our next order of business is city manager reports, and we have three. The first is support for restoring across-the-board cuts to aid in aid to localities, proposed Resolution 11-10.
Yes, our finance director, Phil Sarah, worked on this, so I'll ask Bill to brief you.
Mayor Holman, and members of city council, the state's cut of aid to localities by $60 million per year for the last three years. The cuts have been statewide, each of those $60 million per year, and the programs that they've cut have been essential, such as funding for police departments, libraries, funding for registrars, all the comp board positions, and cuts in distributions of recordation taxes, bank stock -- rolling stock taxes, and also cuts in a variety of human service programs. This is the program, if you'll recall, that localities were given the option, starting in FY '09, that we either take reductions in the funding for those programs during the year, or choose to simply write a check back to the state, which is what we have chosen in each of those years. And we have a line in the budget called Aid to the Commonwealth every year for that purpose. In the city's case, the state cuts for FY '09 through '11 amounted to sending back about $93,000 to the state, and we're scheduled to send back another $37,000 in January. The Virginia Municipal League and Virginia Association of Counties are recommending that localities statewide urge the governor to restore funding in the current year, FY ' '12, and to also eliminate the $60 million per year in cuts in each of the years of the state's '13 and '14 biennium. So, Resolution 11-10 will show City Council's support for this initiative, and we're encouraging you to approve this resolution.
Great. Thank you, Phil, and thank you for putting this together and putting together a nice statement of what this is all about. So, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just have one question. Mr. Sarah, you may or may not have this information at your disposal, but the state's end of fiscal year financial situation, the state?
They announced just yesterday that they are estimating FY '11 at $311 million surplus.
$311 million surplus.
And FY '10 was $403 million surplus. So, they've got -- they are operating above expectations, and mainly state income taxes are coming in higher than expected.
And granted, the state has made other significant cuts that don't directly affect localities, but affect the entire Commonwealth, but this is about one-fifth -- the amount that we're talking about, the aid to localities, is about one-fifth of the state's surplus. Thank you.
Scott, anybody else?
Will this fold into our legislative agenda later on in the year? Yes, it certainly will. Every year, we've talked about the funding relationship between localities and the states.
Sure, sure. Hopefully, at some point, we can drop it. But yes. Any further comments or questions? I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council approve Resolution 11-10, resolution requesting members of the Virginia General Assembly to reverse the $60 million per year aid to localities reduction for the current year, fiscal year 2012, and to eliminate the reduction in the budget submitted for fiscal years 2013 and 2014.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Next city manager report is the Williamsburg Performance Management System.
Yes. What we'd like to do, the punchline is going to be Mark Barham here in a little bit. He's going to show you the new performance dashboards that we have available, both for use for city staff and now online to the public. But Phil, Sarah, and I are going to kind of set the stage a bit and put the dashboards in context of the wider performance management system. And I'm going to start by kind of discussing how it all relates back to the city council's goals and initiatives, and then -- and take it forward from there. So, I'm going to talk about how our performance measurement system relates to council's policymaking cycles, and also the longer-range planning and city operational guidance that we do. This chart, of course, comes out of your council rules and procedures. This chart, of course, comes out of your Council Rules and Procedures manual, where in four areas that reoccur, that seasonally, we do the same things either on annual or biannual timeframe, in the area of goal-setting and budgeting, board appointments, community outreach, and then obviously elections and legislation. So that the election cycle of the City Council really sets the whole cycle and process. And as you well know, it's because of the even-number year, May election, with the new council taking office in July, and then going about setting its agenda for the next two years, that defines the way we do our goal-setting in the city. But that is done in even a broader context, starting with the city's vision statement, and then a number of long-range planning and policy documents that, in the case of comprehensive plan, is, looks well into the future, updated every five years. We're this year in the process of updating the Economic Development Plan, that was done five or a little bit more than that years ago now. And so that and the other items listed up there are all examples of the long-range planning the city does. And then there's a lot of operational guidance for all the various lines of business that we are in that come into play as well. All of that comes together in developing those two-year biennial goals that the process that you all have just completed last fall, driving two budget cycles. So I don't need to spend much time in, with council, talking about goals, initiatives, and outcomes, GIOs, because you're well familiar with it. But if we were in another setting with another group, we would spend a little bit more time to explain what the process is, what the outcome of that process in terms of initiatives under the ten-goal areas, and also the outcomes portion of the GIOs, which is the part that relates most directly to performance measurement and performance management. So that section of the GIOs are broken into two parts. One, looking at desired outcomes, and then what are the quantifiable observed results against those desired outcomes. So that you see on the left-hand side. The right-hand side are the National Citizen Survey results, where we now have two years or two time periods' worth of data, two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten. And we're also able to measure now, not only against ourselves over time, on all these indications, indicators in the National Citizen Survey, but then to benchmark against all the other communities which conduct that same survey nationally. You'll soon be receiving the latest version of the Quick Look Report, where we take a look at the initiatives, the outcome indicators, and the Citizen Survey results, color-coding them real quickly to determine where are we in the process? Are we staying steady? Are we improving? Are we declining? How do we compare to national benchmarks? And in case of projects, are those projects underway? Are they on schedule? Are they behind schedule? And so forth. And you'll soon be seeing another one of these when you get the update on the goals that will be coming out later this month. But what I really want to do, and then I'm going to pass the baton here, is talk about our performance management model and how it relates to what you're going to see in dashboards in just a moment. The way we've set this thing up is it's helpful to think about performance management in two spheres at the, or two poles. A community pole related mainly to what's the performance of the Williamsburg community, and then an organizational pole at the bottom, which looks at what about the performance of the city government as an institution itself. So at the top, that's mainly the community pole, looking at our performance related to what we say we want to accomplish in the GIOs. And the wedge in the middle, the green wedge, is what are the mechanisms we receive, the report backs, the dashboards you're going to see, the GIO updates, looking both at initiatives and the desired outcome and observed results. On the organizational pole, this is, of course, the world of performance measurement on the actions and activities of the city government itself. On one side, we're looking at those departmental missions and looking at desired outcomes and observed results. And on the left-hand side, now we're at the sub-departmental level, the cost center level, looking at inputs, both in terms of dollars and people, and also outputs, various metrics and descriptors of work that is accomplished, activity that is done. And here, we're looking at performance targets and trends, again, at the cost center level. Mostly, in the green wedge, those are the feedback reports in this area. But now focusing on the, excuse me, on the left-hand hemisphere, that's the action side of things for both the community level and the organizational level. And the key documents there are our five-year CIP, our annual budgets, as well as employee performance appraisal fits into this as well, as we measure how we're doing, both on the community objectives and initiatives, as well as all the details that come out at the cost level and the budget. But this, the action side, is measuring activity. The right-hand side is the outcome side, the result side. And again, both organizationally and community-wise, we're focused on what does it all mean? How effective are we at the end of the day? And that becomes the effectiveness measures, and relying very heavily on those National Citizen Survey results. So that's just, again, a quick context to put the rest of what you're going to hear now into the big picture. So Phil, if you will come up and take this from me and go over your piece.
I'm going to speak briefly on just what we've done since nineteen ninety-four. Mr. Tuttle came in ninety-two, so a few years after he came, we got together and we decided to start performance measurements. So we started working with Lotus Spreadsheets, later Excel Spreadsheets. Everything was very manually intensive. And I'm going to show some screenshots of some of the reports that we actually produced, mostly which were in the budget. A lot of this was in anticipation of working with the GFOA Budget Presentation Awards Program. They liked all of this very much. But we worked the numbers pretty much at the end of the quarters and certainly at the end of the fiscal year. But we didn't work a lot with them, certainly not as much during the year as we do now. But we knew we needed to do something to gain some momentum with performance measurement. So in two thousand and six, we knew about the ICMA's work with the Center for Performance Measurement. It's one of their divisions up there in DC. They came to Virginia, and along with twenty-seven other localities, the city joined the Virginia Performance Consortium. So this gave us a whole new, only way to organize and get our performance measurement much more structured. We do annual reporting with the ICMA now. We do it in sixteen service areas. There's a screenshot of one of the templates. We actually go online, put the data in. We'll be starting the FY eleven process in a few weeks, and it'll be due about the first of October. But like I said, it's a very structured program. The good thing about the Center for Performance Measurement, it gives us access to a lot of web resources on their website. They're working with a data query tool right now that's going to be unveiled shortly. But there's a lot of detailed information for other localities like us that are working with performance measurement. And the good thing is, we can try to benchmark, try to figure out when something's working really good in one locality, and maybe another locality can emulate it. It's just a lot of, a lot of good things working out there, and we want to be part of it. And these are, the CPM comes out with an annual data report. This is from the latest one. We're, you can't read these, but I just wanted to include them to show that you can see where you fit against other localities. And these are kind of the best of the best that make it to the graphs in the report. And we're in quite a few of the reports, in the graphs for the two thousand and ten report. In two thousand and nine, we wanted to automate this whole process, and you know as well as I do. Two years ago, we were standing here in August of oh nine, unveiling the work that we had done with our programmer, M-Gov Power, and we were the beta site, working with that software. So we got away from the spreadsheet aspect of data collection and automated it, and we linked it all to our integrated databases to make things a whole lot more meaningful to us, a lot more easy to work with. And we came up with a lot more performance measures. We're working with well over seven hundred measures now. We've recently integrated the National Citizen Survey results for the two periods that we have with the National Citizen Survey. So we're pushing about eight hundred measures right now. And again, it is a central data repository. A lot of information goes in, a lot of information goes out, and it's understandable to work with. And the latest features, Mark's going to show you in a bit here. And as you know, the Department Heads are responsible for getting the information in, and you've seen what the monthly report looks like. I won't go over that again, but a lot of good information. But we work a lot with the data in the budget every year, trying to link outcome measures with Department missions, and then the metrics themselves with cost center inputs. There's the budget cover, of course. And this is part of the performance metrics section. This is the Public Works sheet, showing in detail all of the mission and the inputs on top and the outputs at the bottom. But looking at it a little closer, we define the missions, of course, and you've all seen these with the budget, I know. But showing all of them, where the money goes over the first two years, and then the current-year budget and the next year, for each of the service areas, along with the full-time equivalent counts for the years that we're showing. And more important, though, are the outcomes and results, and Mr. Tuttle touched on this. These are, a lot of these are the same that are in the GIOs, and we are trying to quantify and define what makes, what is a good outcome to, trying to support the mission of each of the departments, and then show the results. And that's, it's very hard to do, and we're working on that pretty hard now. We are trying to show the National Citizen Survey results in here as many places as we can, since that's probably one of the best outcomes that we could be trying to achieve, is high citizen perception. Okay? And then this is just the cost center, one of the Public Works Cost Centers, showing inputs at the top, outputs at the bottom, inputs, of course, being money and manpower. And then down at the bottom, the performance trends and targets. And then we're trying to pick and choose what are some of the best measures that represent the operation for those cost centers, and show the actual results for a few years, along with the projection for the current year and the target for the next year. And with that, we'll let Mark get into his piece.
Good afternoon. The initial phase, as we're all aware of, the performance management system as a whole, is the performance management application, as Phil touched on briefly. It was the initial phase of the city's overall performance management system. It's been in place roughly two years. It is the overall, the data collection mechanism program software, as well as the reporting software. It generates the monthly departmental operating reports that we're all very familiar with, as well as the key indicators report. The newest system, and obviously the second phase of the overall performance management system, is the performance management dashboards. These dashboards, they display data from live, from the source, from the source city system. So the dashboard itself, when we develop these elements or these metrics, they're looking at the source city system. So if you're looking at a financial element, it's reading that information directly out of the city's financial system. The great point about that is that if you're looking at a financial element, you're seeing, either as a staff person or as a citizen, you're seeing the most current, the most up-to-date financial information right at your fingertips. This is an example here at the top. This screenshot is an example of a staff dashboard, just so happens to be my dashboard. I'll get really into these dashboards here in just a second. One of the key differentiating factors for us, as far as the dashboards go, is that the system is web-based, meaning anyone with a web browser and an internet connection can access these dashboards from wherever. So if you're a staff member sitting at your desk, you can access them. If you're a citizen sitting at your house or wherever, you can access them. As you can see up here, the data is displayed either in graphs or in tables. The data that is displayed in tables, this one right here, can have, we can have traffic light indicators, where we set these various thresholds here. This just so happens to be a budget. We can apply the standard traffic light indicator, green being good, yellow meaning caution, and then red meaning, you know, stop. You really need to take a closer look at it. But we do those based on thresholds that the city has established. So it's really, a really quick look, kind of ideal for what a dashboard is designed to give you a really quick visual indication of what's going on. And then finally, the newest part of the dashboards are our public performance management dashboards. As you'll see momentarily, this up here at the top is a screenshot of an actual, the public dashboard. As you will see, the metrics, we organize them according to the city's Goals, Initiatives, and Outcomes document. There's ten tabs across the top that correspond to a major goal area. Under each of these tabs, under each of these major goal areas, are metrics that support the stated goal. What this really does is it allows staff and citizens to really kind of focus in on the goal area that is important to you, and understand how the city is doing performance-wise against that stated goal. And with that, I'm going to show you a couple of dashboards. The first one is going to be mine. Obviously, my dashboard is and should be different than the Finance Director's or the City Manager's dashboard. So you're really going to start to see the power of this software. I have two tabs across the top, one being IT Operations, one being Website Information. And then the metrics underneath here that are important to me. So how I manage the IT Department, all of these metrics give me a really good indicator. As you can see, when we organize in this way, it's kind of small. So we have a maximize button here. So if you're, and this works the same way if you're on the public dashboard or if you're on a staff dashboard. You have a maximize button where you can essentially blow up the dashboard and really start to get a look at the various metrics. In this case, it's an average time to initial help desk response. So when a city staff person puts in an IT help desk request, how long does it take IT to initially respond to you to see what's going on? You can see here, we've got, down at the bottom, we have a legend. This applies, again, on any metric. We have legends at the bottom. The red is fiscal year two thousand and eleven. The blue, obviously, we have one for fiscal year two thousand and twelve. The real beauty of this system is that all of this data, I mentioned that it's live and it's dynamic. When we go into, when we record August numbers at the end of this month, you'll see another little blue bar pop up here. It's all, reading it dynamically from the source of the data. So I can look at this and get a really good indication on how we're doing in terms of responding to the needs of the staff. I talked earlier about the budgetary ones and the traffic lights. Obviously, this is the IT budget for the year. Obviously, right now, they're all green. That will, of course, change as time goes on and money is spent out of that individual budget. And then just another quick example here. This is e-government revenue. And you can see here, we've talked about doing this, recording this data for well over two years now. In some cases, we're coming up into four years' worth of data. So I can look at e-government revenue across four years for this particular month of July and see where we stand relative to prior fiscal years and so forth. Now, I'm going to log out of that, and then I'm going to log into Jack. I'm going to let Jack talk about his dashboard, and you'll really see the power in it and how his is separate from mine, and how they're all really separate from each other.
Okay, if you'll look across the top, you'll see all of my dashboard. I've started with a CM, and then the area that I'm collecting the charts in. So this first area is on organizational health, so I'm just looking at various human resource indicators. And why don't you click on the Health Insurance Claims page, since we just talked about that earlier? So I can see on every month how much money went out for health insurance claims, and our progress over the course of a year and how we relate to prior years. And the nice thing about the system is, if I didn't want it, the graph in bar graph form, I could do it in line graph form, I could do it as stacking graph, and say, how best can I array the data so it's most useful to give you that quick look in this area? Click on maybe to the next one on City Financials. So in this one, we're looking at a So, in this one, we're looking at a number of indicators of city financial health, and why don't you go to the first one there, Mark? And also, Mark, if you'll click up the description at the bottom. There is, with every one, a more detailed description of what you're looking at, what the data means, is in this location. And all of this, as we go on, particularly important on the public dashboards, that we need to get a good description of what this means and what it doesn't mean, and so folks will know what they're looking at. And if you could pull down the screen. So, the brown bar is the unassigned fund balance in each of those years, going back to 2005, and this information is all directly out of the CAFR. And then where were we, and obviously, in this case, it's annual data, as opposed to monthly or quarterly, and what were our overall operating reserves, and what's our policy minimum for that year? So, those are just, the beauty of the system is if I know the data's out there, we can construct the graph that is most useful in tracking that and knowing where the trends are. And once it's done, once that is created, it goes into a, in fact, Mark, why don't you just click on to the list of all of the charts and graphs? There you go. So, I can pull up, everything that's out there is available, so I can pull out any one that's existing and pull that into City Financials and create my own dashboard. And the point of the whole exercise is that, the slogan is "A Dashboard For Everyone." Every single employee, every, you can create the dashboard that is most useful for you, depending on your job and responsibilities and what you need to know, what you want to know. And so, the Finance Director and I might be looking at a lot of the same, but then again, he might, he has a whole set of things he needs to look at, I don't, so he can create it to match his particular needs. Why don't we go over and click on, well, just do Property Taxes real quick? So, General Property Tax, and then Business, Personal Property, and Real Estate. And these graphs are all, and this format was one we developed because we can see year to year, it stacks on top, each one of those bars stacks on top, so we can see the year as it's being built, and then we get a total for the year, as well as being able to find out what did we do right during a given period. And if you click on Other Taxes, and again, for any one of our revenue sources, essentially, we've got the same thing. Next one, why don't you go to City Operations? We'll leave Expenditures for right now. So, here's a lot of different indicators of performance in City Operations and that I pulled in. One very new, we've just, we've had our intern, Jason, working on metric tons of emissions, CO2 emissions by the city, and tracking those over time. So, I pulled that up and put it in there. I'm not sure I know what it means yet, but I've got it. And then finally, the last one on Community. So, a number of indicators here, such as, that are more, again, on community-based, water consumption, Wi-Fi visitors, it's quite a group of WAT ridership. So, you can see the number of things that we've got out there. And so, we've got 700 different measures, 800 we're tracking now, but these will continue to grow, and then we can continue to pull in the ones that are useful, drop the ones that are not, and get the data. The idea is to get the performance information to the person that needs to know it and tailor it very specifically. So, okay?
All right, so as we said, the newest version of these dashboards are the Citizen Dashboards. So, now all of a sudden, we're taking this data that city staff has been using for a while now, and we're making it available out to the public. So, this is just the main city website. If you click on the Public Dashboards link up here, kind of gives you a quick, why are we doing this? What data's available out there? How it's broken down by the 10 major goal areas? How you access the dashboards? And then just kind of more navigational-type information right here. Then at the bottom, click the button, it takes you right to the Citizen Dashboards. And these are live, these are out there right now for the citizens to see. So, as you can see across the top, you have Community Engagement, Character of the City, Economic Vitality, and so forth. So, all of the 10 major goal areas of the Goals, Initiatives, and Outcomes, and then the associated metrics or the metrics that we currently have that best tell us how we're doing performance-wise against the stated goal, we have all of that information out there. So, an example here, under Economic Vitality, local 1% sales tax by quarter. Again, always, on every one of these metrics, you're always gonna have a legend at the bottom that's gonna tell you what you're looking at. You're always gonna have a little piece of information description, if you will, that's gonna tell you what the data means to you and how it's useful, what it means to the city as well. And then you can just hover over each individual one. So, if we're looking at this local 1% sales tax by quarter, I can look at each by fiscal year, by quarter, and then if I hover over it, I can see the actual underlying data point that's associated with it. As Jack said, this one, we feel that it's easier to see trends when they're stacked sideways. This could just as easily be stacked vertically, it could just as easily be aligned. The point is, is to put the data out there and to allow, hopefully, the data and the way it's displayed to tell the story. Back on Character of the City, you see here, we have, all throughout these dashboards, particularly on the public dashboards, we have Citizen Survey results, we have two years' worth of data. So, if you look here, Preservation of Natural Areas for fiscal year 2008, fiscal year 2010, we're also showing the national benchmarks. So, how is the city doing in this fiscal year relative to the national benchmark? We talked earlier about assessment of sales ratios. You can start to see this. We've talked about how that's creeping closer to the 100%. You can see that. We put a line across there to kind of show you what the target is for this particular metric, and then you can see where we're at by fiscal year, by month within the fiscal year, relative to that target. This is the, I was in the Transportation tab, a lot of Citizen Survey data out there. We also have the Public Safety tab. Here, you can go on and you can see fire response times, in minutes on the left-hand side, by month, by fiscal year. You can also look at EMS response times, police response times, how many accidents with injuries inside the city limits by fiscal year. And then some others, Education and Human Services, SOL passing rate for Matthew Waley, we have that information, active cases of food stamps, just any that are specific to that, that major goal area. And then Jack talked a lot about the sustainability metrics that we now have, metric tons of carbon dioxide emitted per city employee. We can do this. This, again, is for three years' worth, or you can just look at the city organization as a whole. We have that here, and that line is obviously trending in the right direction. And then as well as electrical usage, we track electricity usage for every city facility, as well as natural gas usage for those facilities that utilize natural gas. So, you can really kind of see where we're at. Again, not necessarily, nothing really jumps out, but it, you might see something that makes you ask the question, that's kind of hopefully what this is, what this is going to do, is to kind of get you to ask the question, why did this go up? Why did this go down? What are we doing right? What are we doing wrong? Then finally, we have Reservoir. So, four years' worth of data for the reservoir, where are we at? Fiscal year '12, there's a single data point, obviously, because it just started. So, you can see this is inches above the spillway, so this is a pretty, pretty important metric for not only the public, up to the staff as well. And then finally, you have the Organizational Leadership tab, operated results versus the budget. The chart that you see in the budget every year, we've just taken those numbers and made it a graphical element, so it's up to date whenever you, whenever you'd like to see it. And then finally, Other, as Jack said, Human Resource Type Indicators, workers' comp injuries, sick leave utilization, all those different types of metrics that you'd expect to find in the Organizational Leadership tab. So, in conclusion, all of this, the public dashboards are out there as of today. We've made this available, we've built the links to it. It's out there, it's ready to go for citizens, or for anyone, really, to view. The only requirement, and there is a short video on the site, the only requirement to access these dashboards is that A, you have an internet connection, and B, you have Microsoft Silverlight plugin, and that's available. We have a link on that dashboard page that takes you right to that. It's free, they have it available in a PC version, as well as a Macintosh version. So, anybody with a PC, anybody with a Mac, you can all look at the data from wherever you may be. And with that, the three of us will answer any questions.
Great. Thank you all. This is daunting. Any questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions. You said Microsoft Silverlight plugin, is that what those graphs are being generated through?
That's the underlying technology that allows it to happen. There's some different, and I won't bore you with the terminology, but there's some different controls that are in place within the website that utilize that underlying technology to pull the data from the system and then display it however we tell it to display it.
So, is the overall package that allows this data to go from source to dashboard something that is a purchased product or something that was developed?
It was one that was developed by our longtime software partner, MGovPower. We went to them with, it initially started out with the Performance Management Application, with just more of a way to allow us to track and have a data repository and then report out, and then the dashboards grew out of that.
So, just pick another locality in the state, they don't have this exact thing?
No.
Who else, or you may or may not know this, the public dashboard aspect, how many other communities are doing this or have this kind of information available? Do you have any idea?
Well, I don't think anyone has this.
Well, not this exact thing.
There are certainly efforts out there to take performance information and make it available to the public in various ways. I don't know anyone else that has it where basically, where essentially the public is going in and pulling live data out of your own databases and systems and seeing that displayed on their screen and that they have access to, I don't think, I don't know anyone else that has that.
It's just a remarkable level of transparency. Real time, I guess it's not real time, it's probably as of the last time the data's been crunched. But the drawing the data from the source into these reports, basically, is what they are. Is that eliminating a significant amount of reentry of data and eliminating input error and basically, I mean, are there some categories, though, that you have to, somebody has to take the information, physically input it into it?
Well, every month, city staff inputs data into the Performance Management Application, which is what is a central repository for all this data, and then we then report that back out in the form of monthly operating reports. As far as the dashboards go, once that data, once we've identified the source of that data, we're pulling that live. So, if it was an IT metric that was in the Performance Management System that I or my staff has entered for that month, we're pulling that out as, that is the most current. If it was a financial indicator, we're hooked directly into the city's financial system. So, if you're looking at personal property tax collection rate for this six-month period, if you were to look in the city's financial system and then look at the dashboards at any point in time, those numbers would be exactly the same.
And using the financial information as an example, there's no reentry of that into another reporting mechanism?
Absolutely not.
That comes right out of where all the transactional information is stored.
Absolutely. It's entered one time, they can then report on it within their systems, and then we can then go in and grab that same data and report out to it via staff dashboards, monthly operating reports, or public dashboards.
That's pretty amazing.
As you're flipping through, I just keep thinking, you know, you wanna know how much water's in Waller Mill? Mark Barham has an app for that. That's the way, this is amazing. Can you just spell out a few ways you feel like this is gonna save city staff a lot of time?
Well, certainly, as Mr. Frohling indicated, the fact that we're going to the source of the data. Ideally, to get this data out, and obviously, we talked about transparency. However, if in the name of transparency, we had people entering data in the financial system and then entering it here, and entering to another system just to enable this, that would not be a very efficient operation. So, just by sole, by virtue of using it, the data from the source is an incredible time saver.
Thanks. Good deal. Thank you.
Well, clearly, many things are positive about this, and thank you for speaking to how the information is gathered. You know, we all know statistics are only as good as the information that's going into it, but it seems to me, the way that you all have structured it, you know, takes out a lot of the human error, because it, you know, it ties into the other softwares, the checkbook, essentially. So, that's good. What's the downside? Any downside? What do you hate about it?
I've been living this for a while now. I really don't. I think, I haven't, I don't know of a downside. I certainly, we've certainly, I think all of us, city staff as well, this is not just a Mark Barham or an IT or even Jack, Mark, and Phil created this. This is, city staff has put a lot of time in, into making this what it is. I think we've all had a lot of ha-ha moments in terms of, you know, developing these dashboards and seeing something and saying, well, you know, this is really cool, but it'd be really cool if we could do it this way, and then go out and do it that. So, I think it's certainly a lot more positive than it is negative.
Well, it is certainly positive, and it really makes it difficult for anybody to say, I didn't know.
Sure.
I mean, it's there, the information's out there. Thank you all.
Yeah, I guess I have one question, and this is sort of more an organizational question. If I'm in position X with the city, I can go in and pull that in and create my dashboard. What's the mechanism for understanding organizationally whether I'm looking at the right things or not? So, how do you think about that?
Yeah, and you've asked the next question. Because I think as much as what we have is good, it's only a fraction of the better-yet information that that particular employee needs to know in order to have, to do their job better, and to see potentials and opportunities that we're not seeing now. So, it's, it's something that, it drives, in a sense, it drives itself in that, now that I've got my dashboard, I've got it set up, I realize, in a sense, how inadequate it is. And I'm realizing what I really need to know is, for instance, I've got that one metric that shows sick leave utilization citywide. Well, that would be of really no use to say, Lori in Parks and Recreation, she needs to know sick leave use in her department. So, she's gonna come back and say, I need to know that. And by the way, all department heads need to know that. In fact, you know, the division level, in the Landscape Division, needs to know what their sick leave utilization is, so that now, you know, Will has got that information on his work group at his level. And that's what I mean by a dashboard for everyone. So, but because these elements are there, the ability to say, we need to have that, pretty quick between Mark and the data source, whether that might be HR and the information that Jackie Herman has in Human Resource, now it's made available, it's set up as a graph, and now Will can download that and have that on his dashboard. So, that's where we're going with this. And I think that, frankly, I think the 700 measures is just the beginning. I think we'll end up with thousands, and that now we've gotta manage that so that we know what we have. But it gets down to, another example I like to use, it's good for city manager to know the tons of material we're sweeping off the streets, or the number of garbage misses we have. It's more important for Dan Clayton to know that, but it's even more important for the street sweeper who's driving the truck to know that information. Or, in the case of Tammy, who is managing the missed calls, to know exactly what the history has been on missed recycling pickups or trash pickups. So, that her dashboard needs to have that information. So, that's where I see this going, and that's what I mean when I say a dashboard for And, and that's what I mean when I say a dashboard for everyone.
And that means this is never going to be done.
Exactly.
And, and it is a constant iteration toward what is the information that allows you as an individual to do your job better?
Right.
And, and what you're trying to do is create the mechanism so the individual can create that.
Yeah.
Now, if I recollect, you did a presentation on this at a recent meeting.
Right.
Tell us a little bit about that and tell us a little bit about how that was received.
Yeah. Well, first of all, it was a longer version of what you've seen now, without some of the stuff at the end because we weren't there two months ago. But the, and generally, the reaction out there among localities, people from localities all over the country was, gee, what's it like to finally get to heaven? You know, they, they really looked at that. And I had to hold it back and say, no, we're not there yet. It's just, it really looks great, but it's only the beginning. Because I think most jurisdictions just aren't anywhere near this point of being able to have that information available to them and constantly updated and, and have a system. And, you know, so.
Would you say you're at the cutting edge of this?
I think we are on this particular program and application. And, and MGOV Power, by the way, you know, we, it hasn't cost us much to develop this because they, they see the opportunity in it. And so they've put a lot of time and effort into this that we haven't actually paid for because they're hoping to, to have a product they can market along with their other soft, software so they can go out and say, well, not only provide your financial package and your various other applications, we now have a performance management package that's really powerful. So.
So when you talked with other localities and talked about that next step of, of making this a public dashboard, what, what was their reaction? Does anybody do anything close to that?
Well, no. By the way, there's, there's a lot of fear about the public side out there. There's, it's part of the reason why only a small percentage of localities take the national citizen survey. Because, you know, it's great when you get it back and you're, you're above the benchmark, but it, that means someone's got to be below the benchmark. And so it's got to be an organization and a, a city council and a public which allows you to put out information that shows you're not doing very well in a certain area and doesn't hit you over the head with it, but rather says, we need to know that. And so there's a lot of fear about, if I really say what, if I send all this information out about what's really going on, it may come back and be, be used against, against the, the staff that's making the information available. So there's fear of that. And because, again, Williamsburg is different. Williamsburg has got a, I guess I would say, a level of political maturity and, and a community that is accepting of this. And frankly, I'll give credit to our newspapers, too. They have not gone through our performance information looking for gotchas. And you could have a lot of communities where that's what goes on. And then in that, people are going to get burned and they're going to pull back. So it, for this to be productive.
Ultimately, if, if you're going to do a better job, and, you know, I like to say, you know, we provide excellent services, but we can always do better. And this is the way you do better.
Yeah. And there's a converse side to it. You might find you're way above the national benchmark in a certain service. That may tell you you're putting too much resource into that service, that you need to spend less on that, accept a lower level of performance so you can do other things. And, and that's a valuable use of this information as well.
And, and those are the kinds of public discussions that need to take place.
Because they're, they're values of where do we put our valuable tax dollars? Where, how do we get the most out of it based on what we want to accomplish?
Good. Anybody else? Yeah?
How does the employee without a workstation access their dashboard, their central unit?
Well, every employee, if, if, most employees have a workstation. Most do. Not every employee does. But every employee has an immediate supervisor who does. So if, if you're in the street division, not every employee in the street division has their own computer, but George Walker does. And so the supervisor does, and it is there and it's available for everyone to use. The nice thing about workstations these days is the cost per unit is way down. So if we need one someplace, we can do that.
We all, we also have, just to that point, we also have some common area workstations. For, taking the shop as an example, there's, there's a couple of workstations within the division offices as well as the shop lounge that could easily access the data.
That are more communal and.
Absolutely.
Could you imagine a future where every employee has an iPad so that they, everybody can have access to whatever their dashboard is and whatever their measures are?
That's a ways off, but.
Yeah. And I don't want to break the budget right now, but basically, you can, can think about, about sort of, you know, I, I think this just opens up incredible opportunities for the city and the community to, to start having serious conversations about a whole range of issues. Anybody else? Any comments? Thank you very much. And thank, thank everyone who's involved in that, which means every employee of the city. So thank, thank you very much. Okay. Our next city manager report is the 2011 William &amp; Mary Student Outreach Activities. I believe a week from tomorrow, the new freshman class comes in. So, Jack?
The list that you see and that Jody Miller put together is, is similar to what we have done in the past with a couple exceptions and one major new program. So I thought I'd ask Jody to explain that to you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council. In addition to the activities that are on your, the memo that's prepared for you, the city has been working in partnership with AV Adventures and the College of William &amp; Mary to provide a new activity, which we're very excited about as part of the overall orientation schedule at William &amp; Mary. This would be for new students and transfer students. The idea is to introduce them to city businesses using the latest digital and social media techniques. The event would take place as part, as I mentioned, as part of the overall official orientation program, and it's scheduled to take place on Friday, August 26, starting at 7:30 PM. The event itself will be an interactive walking tour where students travel through the downtown business districts, visiting different businesses, learning about the opportunities at those different businesses. The final leg of the tour takes them right back to the main campus there on William &amp; Mary in the Sunken Garden. As part of the tour, students will be engaged with participating city businesses in a variety of different ways, being either acknowledged in the locations, explaining what kind of services they provide there, in real time, sign-ups with social media, engaging with those businesses right there as part of the tour using social media tools like Facebook, like Twitter, as well as interactive five-minute pieces based on that business. And a business can sign up to be a high-level sponsor where they have essentially a scene as part of their, part of the tour. Each student will receive a backpack filled with information from sponsoring businesses. Each backpack will also contain the city's retail and dining map, so that students will have that as they start their educational careers here in Williamsburg. And in addition to the tour on the 26, AV Adventures, who's sort of coordinating and running the, the tour itself, will be working with the city and city businesses to design ongoing promotions throughout this, this school year through social media tools that kind of help the conversation continue going. So this past Wednesday, we had a meeting at the community building to invite city businesses to come learn more about the opportunity for, to be part of the tour. Also, sign up for different levels of sponsorship if they were interested. I'm happy to report as of the end of yesterday, we had 10 city businesses who signed up for additional sponsorship opportunities as part of the tour. And I know our friends at AV Adventures, Adam Stackhouse and Liz Sykes, who we've been working with, have been working with lots of other city businesses who've shown interest. So we'll be working with, with our partners as well as other people on city staff, primarily with police and fire, to work out the logistics of managing the tour on the 26. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one question. You said that 10 sponsorships had been claimed as of close of business yesterday. How many sponsorships are there?
It depends. Different levels have different amounts. The, the minimum level is unlimited, which would include mentions as far as the script and, and sort of being pointed out as part of the tour. If you have other levels, which include sort of being part of a scene staged there, I think there's a, there's a total of four that's allowed. And then there's other different levels, which include social media sign-ups, which I think there's a three, a maximum of three that are allowed. So it's to facilitate the tour continuing. So there's different, different levels and different caps.
The reason I ask is, I ran into Mr. Stackhouse yesterday afternoon, and I was under the impression from him that all of the major or limited capacity sponsorships were sold.
I think it's pretty close, if not complete. I think it's pretty close. The other thing I failed to mention is the sponsorship, is this will be the first time the city's sponsoring this, this type of tour. It's a pretty innovative concept. I'm not aware of any other college town in Virginia or the country for that matter that is doing something like this. But it will be also a sponsorship commitment for four years. So this will be year one for us. And so we'll be able to do this for the next three years after so that we have lots of students who will be coming to our community, who'll get to be engaged and learn more about city businesses.
I just love the idea that over four years, we will have a completely, you know, a fully educated student body. There's no, there's no excuse for not knowing what's downtown. So I think this is all positive.
Will there be a dashboard?
There'll be one.
A Mark app.
Well, I, you know, I'm glad to hear that the levels of sponsorship, or the sponsorships are, are coming in and people are, I guess, businesses are paying to be a part of that. I had mentioned in the past, and I hope that it gets encouraged back to, to the, to the group that's putting this together, that with the city investment, hopefully there's a little bit of mention for all the city businesses in that downtown area, however it works out. But I think it would be important that, because the city's making the investment, that, you know, those businesses get some sort of mention.
I believe the, in the backpack will be the EDA business map that has all the city businesses. So that, that will be the first time that lots of students have seen sort of that full range of businesses in the community as well.
To be clear, every city business is, is open to any sponsorship or mention.
Right.
So High Street, you know, on our.
We just would have to be more creative about how they're included because it really is designed to be a sort of a downtown walking tour. So logistically, the walking part may be harder for different areas, but there's ways to incorporate them as far as the script, as far as the social media aspects, the longer-term promotions in a way so that any city businesses that's interested could be included in some way.
Judy?
Are we going to do the other things that we've done in the past? The picnics, the meeting with student leaders? Is that still on?
We had not planned to do the, the block parties or the ice cream social. We've done this for a number of years now, and it was the consensus of staff that we probably needed to try something different, that those have been useful and important for their time, but this was a better alternative to, to really reach out to students. So at this point, we had not planned to do this.
But you are going to continue doing a number of, of the things that have, have been done in the past.
Right.
That are on this list.
Right.
And particularly, will you tell us a little bit more about the concert on September 1st?
Sure. The, the concert is with Virginia Symphony. We've done this for a number of years now. This is the third year now that we've done it in partnership with the College of William &amp; Mary. And it is scheduled for September, September 1st. And a copy of that press release is with your packet. It'll be starting at 7:30 at Lake Matoka Amphitheater.
That's open to the public and free?
It's open to the public. It's free and open to the public.
Anybody from the city or the college?
Anybody from the city, any students, and all welcome to come and attend. I was able to attend last year's performance. It was a beautiful early fall evening, and it was just a wonderful performance. So we're hoping for good weather again this year.
Also, I think that the Adventures orientation, I think, is, is really, it is unique. I think this is something that I don't think you'll find in other college towns. And I, I see it as a real step to beginning to break down for students some of those barriers and between sort of campus and, and the community and get students thinking more actively about sort of getting, crossing the street and seeing, seeing what's there. So I, I think it has terrific potential for both the students and for the community.
I just would add, I was just looking at my notes, the symphony, the performance this year is Symphony Under the Stars is what it's titled. And it's going to be a pretty eclectic program, everything from Vivaldi, it says, to scores from the movie Titanic, Pirates of the Caribbean, some patriotic favorites. So a little something there for everyone for the, for the concert.
And again, that's September 1st.
September 1st at 7:30, Lake Matoka Amphitheater.
And open to everybody from the community.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much, Jody. Next order of business is unfinished business, and I think we have one. Mr. Frouting?
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council adopt resolution dash, excuse me, Resolution 11-11 effective August 1, 2011, to reappoint Jackson C. Tuttle to the QuarterPath Community Development Authority for a term to expire July 31, 2015. And the council appoint Charles D. Brooks as an alternate to the QuarterPath Community Development Authority for a term to expire July 31, 2014.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott?
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Frouting?
Aye.
Next order of business is new business. Do we have any new business? Hearing none. That brings us to open forum, which is the time anyone who wishes to address council on any matter may do so. If anyone wishes to address council, please come forward. Seeing none. We have nothing for closed session.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Neeson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Frouting?
Aye.